7:00 PM in the approach, we're calling meeting order, August 4th. The A-8 roll call.
Johnny and Brooke.
Nicole, Daywood.
Kyle, Brooke. Got two apps. Public comment?
Morning. Roger.
Roger.
Give yourself that.
Roger.
I kind of wandered into this ESD thing in some way. And I began to listen. And I began to raise simple questions like, how do you create trust when you're violating trust whatever they ask you to take? And that's my biggest concern right now is that from the ESD leadership standpoint, there's a lack of honesty and an attempt to drive a public perspective that isn't truthful. I'm going to drive towards a town hall meeting, which I'm not sure how that always solves any problems, but people are only aware of what they're being fed. Somehow we need to change the diet.
Yes. The three key things that you mentioned too, especially dealing with dealing with volunteers or someone that are in this public service that don't get paid, it's a little bit different when I was working for the agency that we got paid. It was pretty important for the leadership to build trust, to get loyalty. And all that's in the process. You don't have those three, and just want to get all three up to work, because it's a must when you're dealing with volunteers, people don't get any compensation, so you've got to feel that trust. That's part of the problem right now. I mean, they're all totally awful, but there is no trust and there's no honesty.
You're manipulating an outcome as opposed to driving an honest outcome.
Now, all that lay at that, that's my two cents, that's what I had to deal with. Like I said, when my spouse and I were working for the agency, we had these gigantic salaries. We expected all three out, and a lot of times I couldn't pass the loyalty test because I didn't believe in what they were doing, but I found out a way where I could to get them there. So that's what I've always said, that tell me those three questions that you need, what you want, where you want, how much you pay for it, and I'll go out and figure out a way to do it for everybody's sake. And that was part of my job and part of her job. I enjoyed that part of it, I got to see a lot of these three things. Once we made the record, they shipped all of us out statewide. There was a whole bunch of us out to El Paso, middle of nowhere, and we had a week-long come to Jesus meeting. These are three things we talked about. Anyway, I'm reading, I'm, I agree, we're just gonna have to let this play out, I've got a few comments later on, get to the interloper agreement that they've provided, that they're, they're anxious. So without all the public comments, we'll move. Let's see.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Absolutely, I'll second the initiative, okay. Minutes for July 7th, 25. How did you say your directions?
Make a motion to adopt emphasis on public duty. My second.
All in favor? Approval of the bills to be paid? Have a chance to look at it. Multiple colors, there's some yellow on there, I believe.
What's your second? My second.
All in favor? For our report on the operation wastewater treatment plant and collection system, Josh?
The average flow for the plant is 40,000 gallons, it's 20% capacity. The max flow was 80,000 gallons, and polar rain was 2.2 miles per hour. Everything was no issues, except the on-site lift station, the discharge pipe is in it, it's something failed, and it's old iron, ductile iron piping, and it's flooded, it's going on piping, and it's falling apart. So we're getting close to the place that was scheduled A, B, C. And that's where we had two clothes right now, I'm just waiting on contact with like six people, and we're waiting on clothes. But it's temporarily fixed and it's operating good, but it's gonna have to be replaced.
I understand that is the way to go with the lift station, we have the plant, it's about 18 foot deep, so that's a long trip down there, and it's all down, I was planning whenever it was planned.
Yeah, could y'all have a three bit, would you share?
Yeah, no biz, a bit, alright. So if he's put it out to three people and one of them no biz, which is three biz, and it wouldn't be an emergency situation if we had to just go through it, so we could possibly do it, we'd have time. And we talked about schedule A, but on that length, we agreed to go with schedule A, B, C, and make everything plastic, but maybe this doesn't be a first weekend. Anything else?
That's it.
Questions? That's it. Alright, on the financials and on the legislative report, I'm gonna not make any comments on the legislative report, I'll let council talk about that if there's any things that we should be watching for. On the financials, it's just like always, we're ahead of the game on our revenue, and we're down on our spending on the general fund. If you jump over to the wastewater treatment plant, same as always, we're down on the revenue side, we're high on the income, we know we're gonna subsidize wastewater treatment. As far as where we are at this point, we're at 58%, so we're at 77% on collections, so we're well ahead of that. And we're sitting right at 55% on the general fund, so general fund's staying healthy. Wastewater treatment is carrying on as always. They're at 38% on collections, and we're looking for up in the 50s, okay? And we're at 71% on expenditures, which is above what we should be at, but with all the stuff that's going on with age and plant and some replacements, we're gonna spend a little bit more money than we think. Everything else, as far as the grants and hotel and motel budget is pretty much the rate they are each month. Capital projects, we have a start in, we can fix the start on one, so you'll start seeing some action on that budget there. And we'll talk about the record retention. The community center, this is just a whole thing together, we know we're gonna subsidize the operation of that, there is no way that the rentals will pay for the cost of operating the community center right now. So, yeah, that's why I'll state the investment funds, 1.1 million savings account, 1.1 million, and a CD for range of days, tax pool is a quarter of a million. We've got 2,483,657 dollars and eight cents in savings already dedicated. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, grants.
Firefighter 1.
Well, that's why we didn't have the glasses on, okay. I'm fired for it, and that's why I have you here. Michelle, I'm here. Oh, okay.
Alright, so for the month of July, we did 27 calls, we had five structure fires, two MBAs, five EMS assist landing zones, seven false alarms, three hazardous conditions, one road hazard, and four missed recovery. As far as training, we did ladder training, our TMS firefighter 1, first we say cancer awareness, we did three different incident command trainings, hazardous materials awareness, National Incident Management System, the NEMS Interstate Mutual Aid, firefighter 2, officer 1. We had PHI come in and do a landing zone training for us, we bring a helicopter in to show us how to assist them better when we have a landing zone. And we had 10 of us do the hazardous awareness, H100 training. We're all working on getting our class be exempt, and there's an emergency driver training coming up, as well as on Saturday, we start, eight of us are starting our emergency medical responder EMR training. County Y training was our ladder training, we went out and did that, it was a good training. We also had our bingo fundraiser held at the senior center, lots of good response back from that, so much that we were requested to do another one. The restrooms are almost complete, we should have the fixtures and everything getting installed this week, so they should be done. And then we had trees removed to give our landing zone better clearance, kind of all hoppers. We also, our junior firefighter program is growing, it's getting bigger. We met with Dr. Talton, the superintendent of the schools, and we're gonna collaborate with them on how to reach more students, and we have a meeting with Miss Pedro, the CCMMR counselor over there, to see how we can get the certification credit for our students that are doing that, when they complete firefighter 1, firefighter 2, EMR, and AMTV courses. What do we have?
All that material, which fell off the roof, are you gonna use it?
So the plan is to replace the building with that, because the roof said it's good material, it's not good roof material, but it's good material that could be used to fix some of the rusted rod that's on the outside of it.
Alright, so I guess just they set where it is, okay? Any questions? Okay, let's see. Grants. The, it's not a grant, it's a fund. The American Rescue Plan, we still have any money left in that, gentlemen? Alright, we need to work with Brianna and push that out, because the treasury department wants to flush it out here pretty soon, if not sooner. Let's see, the community development block grant, B and M, it's a $631,000 sewer project that runs from the O.P. patch out to 2025, we'll have a meeting tomorrow, and hopefully we're in position to draft a bid for that and get that taken care of. The community block development, Texas Department of Ag, half a million dollar project, is from this end of the sewer line around the heel subdivision of, across from the part of Falco. We issued a notice to proceed about a month ago, at least a month ago, nothing's happened, so we sent them a notice that we'd seize a performance bond, and it was, I hadn't checked, but today they agreed to be on site. Do we know they're on site, are they doing anything?
They're doing a little bit.
Okay, but now they're wanting to do a little bit different on the borders and the roads, so engineering will have their personnel to make sure those are at the right drop, so we don't have to redo them after they leave, so as long as they're, are they storing the pipe here?
They're storing them on site.
Okay, I don't have any horror over that, we don't have to be responsible. So that's, that's good to hear. I'm sure that makes it into the minutes, and when we talk to Pat tomorrow, we'll talk to him about that. The RCP does a study, 300,000, flood mitigation mapping is on it. We'll talk about that in the all grants meeting tomorrow, and we'll see where we are. I'm ready. I think we've done a town hall meetings and a discussion with the public, and everybody's on board, especially with the flood plan happening, to get that started. What that does is puts the city in a position where we'll have shelter-ready projects after we do the studies, and make it easier to get grants and start grants quicker, with some new philosophy of the general land office, so we're sort of beginning to get it on, that's when we'll see how it works out. Parks and Wildlife, one behind us, I'll meet with Pat, I think I'm gonna try to meet with him on Friday, and we'll take a look at the design, get started to do that, we own contractors on that, Parks and Wildlife is with us on that, it's easier dealing with Parks and Wildlife, it's state money, and they'll be reviewing our design, they'll be doing spot checks with us, so it'll probably go pretty quick, at least I'm liking it too, so I'm just one of the people that are using Mark, but we'll do what we have to do to get it done. Any questions on any of that?
Skip sidewalks.
Huh?
You skip sidewalks?
Sidewalks, well, we will be meeting with the engineer Kelly at the Mars, to find out what happened to the sidewalks and what happened to the bypass. They're designing bypass with 18 millimeters to go around the square. Catch it in 2025, we're gonna run across the national forest over 222, they can either go across the dam or 29. And their agreement on working with us on that should have the draft, so I can work with 100, 120, gets wider away from across the national forest. That's our part of it, they're gonna fund it, they're an engineer, they're a contractor, right? By the way, only takes 20 years to do it, and it takes 20 million dollars. I told them we didn't need to go, pass it, that route. But anyway, once it's earmarked, once it's approved, then someone younger than me will see it finished. But it's something we need to get started now, get it done, otherwise we'll not get that, and move the 18 millimeters back right before that's worked. Sidewalks, there are all bases, something going on that, we'll see. Coming up on our, I guess, twice a year we meet with them and sit down and talk to them, and look at the projects that they do. So we did put in, the one that's approved is from the high school down to the interchange, where they control the faucets. We put in for two other ones, a second tiny, and it's from the junior high to the interchange, and from the interchange to the courthouse. The third one is from low and moderate income housing on 150 East into the courthouse. The second two are up for, see if they're gonna be funded on those. And we intentionally divided up into three projects to get one of them funded, and then we'll get the next one and the last one funded. So the sidewalk did not go on the highway, it go on the other side, up against the white way. So we're keeping pedestrians, not bicycle trails, and not skateboard trails, pedestrian sidewalks, entertainment, to keep folks off of the highway. Nice to point that out. Anything else? Okay, city attorney, any remarks?
Yeah, just, just two things, I was in trouble about that legislation, and I'm still gonna get a little package, and it's still going, and we're gonna cut it past at the end of this month, and it's supposed to kind of tell us things. And anything that I think that needs to be on the agenda for the following months that y'all have to do, I hope you can give your opinion.
Yeah, well, one I was watching was the 100 million, $100,000 purchasing.
Yeah.
That getting made, the movement of the election to November, is that, is that Harry Taylor, is that gonna happen?
I, I, I would agree, not that it may happen.
Well, it would streamline everything, there'd be more voters turning out, because there would be a lot more on the ballot of different other things, not on our ballot, but of others. So that's a good move, and it's saving, basically saving the city and the school.
Yeah, well, what I'm looking at, power wise is to make sure there's nothing that y'all need to, as a council, to pass, and into the community, and say, "There's a bird."
Yeah.
Right, for the city.
So we'll have to wait for all the specialist sessions and all three district teams to be armed out to find out what's gonna make it. But I got my last package, I said, "No, I'm sending it back."
Yeah, it's, it's coming along.
I did cross out looking at it, that's what I did for years, once a month, I don't like to do that, electric, do a telephone, we need a good extension.
And the other topic I'm just gonna mention is about an attorney friend who re-called his contract lawsuit, and he's helping doing a background check and case work check on this warranty business with the city. What we're trying to see is people, how's they has been sued before, and what happened, see if there's people that have sued before, what happened, so we can kind of have a good...
Well, and that's on the warranty on the Duramax, where it was all, the warranty was all paid for, we issued a certificate on it, and then the first time we take it in, follow the warranty, they cancel the warranty laws, so...
And the deal is, I mean, we can make it delay it now, but I kind of want to do it in the right way. Also, I want to see if it's even gonna be worth quite because if they were judgment proof or whatever else, then we're just kind of wasting it.
We classify it as the minimalist, we're just gonna swallow it and go down the road because it costs too much to sell. But that's, thanks for your, your contract guy, bottom line is, we're assuming we're certain, otherwise we're just going down the road.
I just didn't watch out there, and I forgot about it, it's, it's in the back there.
Anything else?
Yes.
Alright, I gave you a copy of, I'll bring it up later. Okay, let's go to sewer report, Amanda?
I have one sewer adjustment for deposit five and three, and all three of us have since they've been in the mall.
Okay, on that property, I turned all that over to the son, so I just texted and told him you'd be handling this, and told he'd be handling hers, and I put it in the on text with Jerry Barker, I think, who's gonna handle it, and she got it. So we're out of that, we took care of that job.
Alright.
Any questions on sewer report? Briefing on the record retention building, Kyle and I met out there, we looked at the layout, trying to figure out how to get the use of our warehouses on each side of the record retention building. I came up with the idea of just making the doors at the front where you didn't have to swing around the side, so we're getting a new set of drawings for those doors. We agreed that if we're gonna do this, might as well put the whistles and bells on this so you don't have to come back. The inside of the building, which is gonna be blown in insulation, and have a couple split systems on it, it'll be 12 square foot, they have a little office for the guys in the restroom out there, fumes and surveillance system tied into the building. The two wings I'm talking about, the storage areas, they hip onto the main building, that are 800 square foot each, so we've got about 1600 square foot of secure storage. You'll have a 12-foot door on each side to get in, so I guess you can start parking your extra vehicle as we migrate over to mowing ourselves, mowing equipment and other equipment that you have, a basic here, so. I went ahead, the wellup guy came today, and he's gonna give us the slab layout, and I'll give it to Kyle, and we'll get that, make sure that's sealed, and we'll get close on that, get the concrete done. That's gonna be, where it sits will depend on how much dirt work we do. And it's gonna be one continuous slab with the center part where the records are raised about an inch and a half, so it doesn't flood from the storage side. So we're working on that, I would say within 60 days, we'll be pouring concrete.
And he can really go on that.
He can do that.
We can send all the beat.
Since the city, we're, we're, kind of construction managing this ourselves, and it's a design deal, so it'll take a bite at a time. Get the slab done, we'll buy the building, and supply it to the wellup guy, they're welded up, and we'll subcontract out the flooring, we'll subcontract out the electrical and AC.
See?
Hopefully, we'll get it done pretty quick. Okay, questions on record retention? That's gonna be our first capital project, we're gonna get it moved. Since we're doing it ourselves, funding ourselves, we're moving a little bit forward. Engineering has provided oversight, what Mueller doesn't pick up, we'll have our engineers seal, whatever we need sealed. Okay? Okay, well, everybody's here for our ESD discussion, possible action on Cross Spring Volunteer Fire Department building. I received a interloper agreement provided to be by the ESD, they thought that I was looking too close, they just, they helped me, the old man, sent me an interloper agreement. And I scheduled a phone conference with Brian and Lee, and my administrative assistant sat in on the conversation, takes notes, and basically, by the time I got to talking about their interloper agreement, I was informed that the building did not have American Initiative offices, the fire chief would maintain, and that there was no sleeping quarters in the building. And I just verified, was I wrong, the way I took it, it was not suitable for what they wanted it for. So my close was saying that we do need an interloper agreement for the EMS, for the PAT, help work, because that's gonna stay, and it will be very similar to the one that you had with the corporation, except now it'll be with the city. Basically, they paid for the electricity, and we took care of that side of the house. As far as the fire side of the house, we're not doing anything right now, okay? And I will work with council, provide them an interloper agreement that we'll start in January, because that's when one plays out, and provide them with that for their consideration of that side of the house. Fire side of the house is in limbo, we're gonna let it stay that way until January the 1st, and then we'll decide what we're gonna do with the building. Okay? Questions? Hopeless questions. So we're still stuck out there, and we'll take it.
Questions?
Any questions from the council? Okay, well, one thing I did find out interesting, interloper agreement, they acknowledged that we owned the 19, what is that, 21?
2021.
2021.
Ward Explorer.
Ward Explorer, help me here, okay? I was shocked that they would acknowledge that we owned it.
But we bought it.
Essentially, I did pay, we did pay for it, and we bought components and some other stuff, but that's not the issue, so more than likely, I'll be asking for that transfer of that vehicle back to the city.
Is the tire still in the city?
The fire. I'll leave that up.
I don't think the city's stopping. We'll be actually back for it, we said.
Yes, yes.
The city's out of it there.
And I won't be bashful about asking to give it back to the city. Okay? And they were wanting me to give it to them.
State who?
The E S D. In the, in the document, transfer. But we don't, it's not in our name. It's in the Colespring Volunteer Fire Report slash associations, not the E S D. And we paid for that completely because that was my whole person, meetings I had as a, as a councilman. So we will answer that side.
Did you say to the public, your cabinet, say in this?
In what?
In, in, we've been through all of the E S D meetings and the thing that I can't agree with is they're asking the participants to give up their 501Cs and they're asking them to give up their assets in order to become a member of the group. And where is the justice in fairness in that? Because the fire department started, this particular one started in 1970 and they're expecting them to cater to them just so that they could be a member of their wonderful group.
What you're missing is they're also asking to give all of their funds that they've raised themselves.
Yes.
All funds.
Yeah.
All assets whatsoever, vehicles whatsoever. And some of that's in contradiction with the contract that you're operating up to now, because a lot of that was acquired before that. And, but we're not going to go there.
Good.
Good. We're not going to, uh, never the volunteer fire, uh, never the association. And I have no intention on the fire outside of doing an interlocal agreement for the EMS to take that side of the building. We'll continue the cooperation on the EMS side and the health port, just like always. Because that, that's a great benefit to the citizens here this morning. And it will take probably some of the pressure off the E S D, I'm not sure. But after my conversation with them, they're not interested on the fire side. The only thing they ask is to incorporate equipment there, which after I've given some thought to that, what's wrong with the building that they just have up on here with the four handed base out back with their equipment? I don't know. But I'm not going to make that suggestion. It's my, it's not my call. I'm going to practice serenity. I don't have any control over that and let them make the call themselves. All I can say is they're not interested in our outside because of the air conditioning and sleeping quarters. So we're going to let that dog lie and then we'll see what it tells. Okay?
Okay.
But no interagency agreement on the firehouse side. There will be an interagency agreement on the EMS side and the health port, it will stay just like it is right now. And basically, we pay the maintenance of the building and they use the building and they reimburse us for the utilities. And we're in the process of putting all the utilities in the city's name. We'll pay for them, send them the bill each month. And that will go on just like forever. Okay?
Okay.
Good? The most important thing is what we talked about earlier about loyalty and trust and honesty. Can't operate with all three of those, not working, not on volunteer systems. So there's a lot of work to be done for those three issues for this to work for us again. And we'll continue to endeavor. And who will pursue it, I don't know.
With, with the agency itself, we're having difficulties accepting their accountability and their budgeting.
That's what the public is, you're speaking of the public, right?
Yeah.
You guys, okay, I'm staying out of that. Okay? I've done what I can do in my meetings and I don't have any control of that. That control is with board of directors and those people that appoint those board of directors.
And we keep reminding them of that.
Thank you for that. Anything else on that? Any questions? All right, we'll head. Okay, let's see what we got here. We're getting close to finishing this thing. Okay, overall, new business discussion, possible action on resolution 2025 dash forward, 2025 San Jacinto County initial jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. And we need to pass a resolution. Does this go with R C P? Is this where this falls?
No, this is with the county's doing the hazardous plan for the county.
All right.
We have to sign this.
It has to do with the Federal Disaster Litigation Act of 2020, Robber State Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Y'all can look over this. This is basically boilerplate that comes down from to us. And somehow or another, this will go back into FEMA. If we have a plan and we're coordinating with the county, we're part of that plan. Then whenever there's disaster recovery funds, it makes us a little bit more eligible to file for those ones. It's not guaranteed, okay? But without this, we don't qualify to file for them. Yes?
I'll make the motion that we have to. It's second.
All right. I'll sign it here a little bit, Julie. We'll be getting through to that. Okay, let's see what this can do. Briefing on public works. Very brief briefing. We've agreed now that we have the additional staff and the additional time, we'll start doing a lot of the mowing. So we're going to go out for this. And that comes along with the, with the building, replacement warehouse and purchase not only a diesel mower to mow here and park and some amount of rideaways, but also around the plant, which we have to keep it mode. We will buy a trailer to transport it on and we'll buy a second trailer. So when we pull the single phase power out of there, we'll make the portable fire supply for single phase for this building or anything else that we might have during a disaster. And it's not just for us, it can be for the county or whoever needs it. It'll be on call. It'll be located in one of those warehouses we're talking about, out there. And you will maintain it just like you maintain the other one. We'll fire it up and make sure it's full decent. Questions on that? Okay. We, we adjourned. I've got three things that I put on the agenda next time that you can be thinking about. I'm at a point to help us with the key rate, insurance rate. I'm going to want to appoint our own city fire marshal that will operate for the city. And the first thing we'll do is take a look at the fire code and see if we're where we need to be with that, which will help us once again, like a mitigation resolution. This, this will make sure that we're at the highest level we can be. So when FEMA comes along, not only will we part of this, we've got the fire code that needs to be reinforced and that. And so to do that, I need our city fire marshal. Obviously, it's not a full-time job, but I'll do the search and bring that to you either in 30 days or 60 days. That's one agenda I've appointed, city fire marshal. Discussion, second, we'll discuss the possible action on adopting a state fire code. That might be on the agenda to make sure we're at the level we need to be. Okay? The state fire code, I'm sorry, the state fire code is what will be adopted and will become the city fire code. We want to adopt the highest level, I think. But that will be part of the fire marshals. You might not see that on the agenda for a while, but what get the fire marshal first gets to say, you come back to it. And the third one that we want to talk about is discussion of possible action. And it's about time we do it is, is to take over permitting within the city in conjunction with county. County can still do the 911 and they can still do the per test if they don't have six sort of play. I've already talked to them about it. They agree to do that. We will issue our own permits over this office. And when, once we've been doing it a grade of maybe one a week, it's not going to kill us. The residential's are not that difficult. We've talked to our engineer, he'll do on the commercials, he'll do that for us and that'll roll into permitting, the cost of that. And that's another reason I'm making my dinner on Friday to talk about that in the agreement plan. So that'll be in the next agenda. Discussion possible action on creating our city permit office, which will be in the office. On down the road, I'm going to propose that we do a design on the back of this building for a municipal court extension right out these doors and a little expansion on this kitchen here. And basically, what I'll do is get a contract from, uh, your design coming to do that for us. So we'll have a shell ready project when we get to do it. So we'll get it on paper, review it, just like you did on the community center. And before we leave, run that little one minute video on the virtual reality of what the inside of the building can look like. In front of the building with additional handicap parking in the front. We're going to redesign the road, we've got 60 foot of rideaway that you can play with. The colors, we just stuck on there, they can change. You've got a little brick for the entrance. Office on the left, on the right, museum on the, on the left, a virtual tape that you can punch a button here about the founders and the mission of the, of the building. It's just by the sign. That's the office there, that's up to the elevator. This is the hall that we're looking at. Kitchen's in the back. The restrooms are in the back. You go upstairs to the conference room up over, the office is in the front. You've got an elevator on this side to take you up there. It's a 20 seat conference room that anyone can rent for meetings. We've got four restaurants. We've got a prep kitchen similar to what we have. Serving window. And a storage area downstairs. And we've talked about, you know, the storage over this area. That's at the back, it's the entrance, kitchen entrance out of the park. There you go. That's what I'm shopping right now. I've got two requests for funding in along the G L O, along with the U S Trail Office. They'll come up for consideration next year. I think with, with this and the plans that we purchased, we're in good shape. I'm going ahead and it's a steel frying building. We're having some engineers look at the steel frying right now so we can get our own around what, what that's going to look like. We talked to Bueller, they were really excited that that being part of this, they like it, it's very doable, but we'll see when they come back to it. Right now, there's no cost on that. We do all the design plans and when we get started on this, we're going to take a look at the street itself and make sure it's straight and true. We can pick up parking on our side. We have parking over on the church side, but we can do the same thing on our side all the way down. And we can center, we can center the coves that go on to 29.
Slatting.
Slatting. Because they're awful a little bit right now and they need to be wider. So that's where we are on that. It's something that, that just takes a little bit of time, more than I like. Well, we put those in to make us feel at home. We know. Well, thank God for the lake effect today because the reason why we didn't get the thunder and it's took 40 mile an hour winds when that water came to you, that, that warm lake just split our thing. Unfortunately, Shepherd got it and some of the other stuff hunts me out of it. But anyway, we're not so fortunate when the gulf flow comes in because that's when we catch all the bad weather. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. I wish I could put some pine trees back there.
Yeah, we need to tell them.
We can change that. Anyway, we're, we're at a search right now and some of our folks have copies of this and the copies that go out. And it's a little bit easier to sell. If we're fortunate enough, if one of these trans, we'll probably try to allow a neighbor to pick up that truck on the backside. Otherwise, they'll pay for the cost of this from you, so we'll work on it, okay? Anyone that, any of the organizations that meet, I'll take a look at the design and this, just let me know and we'll get it set up so they can know this coming. It will stay, the community center mission will stay just like it was. Like I said, that front, we were in Rolling Oak, forgotten story about, yeah, in Mississippi. And they had a little museum there that showed the history of the town. And you'd go with a punch a button, some of the old folks would be on there telling about the mission. I thought that would be a good thing to have. When I met with board, I promised them we'd keep it that way. And that's where the boys are going to come back in, it's going to help me get all that information and you can lay this out and have that little tour in the front and let everybody know what that mission is and that it's staying the same, it's not going to change, it will not be used. I bet certain people want it, want me to sell it to them or also, I can't do that. I committed to the board of directors to keep it the way it is and I said, it will stay. And we're going forth with it. 50s, I think, or whatever it was built. It was done by locals and done with local money and that's the way it's going to stay. All we are are caretakers. We grow from that. Other than that, that's all I have. Y'all want to stay another 15 minutes if you want to motion to?
I'll take a message treasure.
All right, I'll say hi. Thank y'all.